Okay, I think that's everyone that was gonna get on and then. Okay, Chris, are you still the host?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Sims, you're gonna be conducting the meeting, so if you need any guidance on it, we have a lot of experts here, so you just feel free to take off and go with it.
All right, according to my clocks, it clocks, it is six o'clock, and we would like to go ahead and see if we have a quorum. And if you would, would you either raise your hand or say here? But I do see Toby Bryan. Also, Ms. Carlani Lewis. I don't see her. Okay, Desmond Hammond. Okay, got a thumbs up on him. Tracy. I don't see Tracy.
I don't either.
Tracy Ritchie.
Wonder if that T is...
That's Wadley. Okay, well Tracy's not here.
Let me see.
Barbara Wells. Not here. Erin Carrington, our president. We've been informed she had her baby on today, so she will not be here.
Tracy said she's connecting in just a second. She's having to finish up another meeting, so she'll be here in just a second. Let me watch and make sure. She tries to get on.
Right now, it appears there are four board members that are on. We'll need one more. We're waiting for Tracy Ritchie to chime in to establish a quorum. The note that the school board meeting is being conducted on November the 16th, the third Monday, due to the upcoming holiday, and we will be out of school. Welcome to all the other people that's here, principals. Mr. Williams, Mr. Harper.
Have all the principals here?
Yes.
Well, she said she'd be connecting in just a second, so. It's awkward moments like this that bring back a lot of memories when I was younger. So Ms. Sims, how have you been?
Been pretty good. Can't complain. Trying to stay in, stay sheltered as much as possible.
It's probably a good time to do that.
Yeah. The holidays are coming, and what we normally do, we can't do with, you know, family, so.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask, has anybody's plans changed up as far as having family or many family come over? Are you visiting? Ms. Ritchie is connecting right now. Ms. Ritchie, you with us?
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, great. We have established that we have a quorum, and we can get started. We're gonna go follow the agenda. And the first thing will be old business. Excuse me, is there any old business that we need to address, or anyone needs to address?
No ma'am, not that I know of.
Anyone? Okay, moving right along. Now we will have item four, information items and reports, our superintendent's report.
Yeah. Of course, we have it. It's where it says the new gym construction in progress. And of course, we know that the gym is finished. And still finishing up a few little bitty things on it, and that's not unusual. But they're very small things. They're possibly, a door may not swing open just exactly the way it's supposed to. Some things like that, but we're getting them fixed. But for all general purposes, it's done, other than, you know, the warranty that's on the building. There are some things that, like I said, that don't always work exactly the way it's supposed to, but they come on right out and start working on it to fix it, so no complaint there. In your packet, you'll see Jennifer on... As of right now, we have a balance on the gymnasium of $2,266 that we have left. Because Jennifer, we don't owe them anymore, do we?
No, we should not. If we owe them anything else, it would be the $10,000. What's it called? Retainer. Not retainer. Yeah.
Retainer.
But we're not sure if we even owe that yet or not.
Right. But other than that, we're scared.
What about the floor upstairs?
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a good question. We're gonna let the floor float for a little while and see if it's an issue. Because what they did was, is they credited us $12,300 something dollars. They credited us that for the floor. We were gonna see, of course, I made a complaint about the floor for months. But what we're gonna do is, we'll see if the floor is an issue. If it's not, we gain $12,000 something dollars out of the complaining. I've had no one at all say anything to me about, about the floor. Now, if you do, please let me know, because we do have that money, or that, that much money to be able to do something with the floor. But we were, we were credited that amount for having the floor, something done with it.
So they never came back and did anything to it, made any corrections to it?
Well, yes, they did. They tried to. But the only way, the only way you can fix the floor is put a coat of something over it, some type of new floor covering. I wanna say paint, but it's more than painting. It's, you know, they would have to do something where adhesive would stick to the concrete. So yes, they did come back to do it. They could have done that, or credited us $12,000 and something dollars. And then that's what they did on the, on the ending amount. They credited us $12,000. So we came out ahead, $12,000 on the project, and we had the money available to do something to the floor, if that's something we want to do.
They must have felt that it would cost more than $12,000 to go back and fix it, and that's why they credited us just the $12,000.
You know, we, we had a company that was willing to do it. We, we had them. They were gonna, the same company that they worked with was gonna do it for that amount of money. And they were gonna pay them to do it. Or they offered us the money. And their strong belief, and I believe this, even though after they paid us, their strong belief in it said, "Mr. Ashley, the floor is not gonna be an issue. You can just wait and watch. I tell you, we're still gonna pay you to have the floor done, if you want to have the floor done." But said, you know, "If I were you, I wouldn't do anything with the floor and see if it becomes an issue. If it does become an issue, you've got the money to, to fix it."
Nothing more has been said about the possibility of putting tread up there? The black, the black rubber tread? Like you put up...
Like on a walking track or something?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It could be covered in that for less than that $12,000. I think it would be, you know, I, the only, the only complaints I've heard is people asking me if it was unusual for the floor to crack the way that is. In a couple of places, there's some gouges.
Yeah, those, I think those have been filled in, but Toby, if, I mean, if you're talking about rubberizing that whole floor up there in any way, you're talking about a whole lot more than $12,000.
Would it be worth just having somebody come out and give you an estimate?
I mean, we could, yeah, yeah. But, I mean, unless I'm mistaken.
You know, I'm, I'm very, very concerned about, we could have signs all over the building saying no food or drink up there, but if somebody brings a drink up and spills it, and there's people up there walking, and somebody gets hurt, we're gonna be liable for it? Because that floor will be slick if it gets wet.
We're, we're selling food and drinks down there in our...
Okay. Well, I just, you know, if, if one of them gets spilled and there's people up there walking, that floor will be slick. You know, it's just something to think about.
Yeah. We've got folks there that can get it up pretty fast, pretty quick.
Well, my thing is, why wait till something happened and then, then fix it? Do, we can fix the error. That's just, why, I mean, why can't we just get it fixed?
And we can.
Why don't we?
Well, I, I just wanted, I wanted to get more perspective on the floor to see if the floor is really an issue from, from other people. I mean, we can get the floor fixed at any time. Or it's gonna be covered, what it's gonna be. That's the only way you can, you know, cover up the marks and thing. The builder, he believes this with all of his heart, he said, is that even, even after they gave us, you know, credit $12,000 something dollars, he said, you know, "Mr. Ashley," he said, "the floor will not be an issue to anyone." Now, it's, it's an issue to me, because I know about it. And I've told y'all about it and pointed it out to you, but I've intentionally walked people around there and just say, "Tell me, tell me what you see. Tell me anything, you know, what, what do you see?" And none of them have mentioned the floor, and I'm thinking, you know.
Mr. Ashley, have, is it Valley View that's got the same gym as ours? Have you been upstairs there?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Their floor look just like ours?
Oh, in some areas. Yeah, in some areas.
You know, you have the same builders, same contractors, and...
Yeah.
If theirs looks good and ours doesn't.
Well, I mean, I, again, you know, when I looked at our floors, you know, it's got some spots on there where they tried to get up some of the darker spots. To me, it looked like oil drops.
Yeah.
Of course, they tried to say it wasn't, but I believe that's what it was. But they tried to get all those up, and then, of course, that left some, some obvious spots to me. Of course, again, their reply was, "Mr. Ashley, you'll find out what I'm talking about. It's a concrete floor. Concrete floors have all kind of different looks." And that one does, even where it's not in the areas where I thought were bad. You know, it's got swirls and different, where it floated up and made different swirls and stuff, so. But I think it's something that we can give it a little bit of time. I think we can give it a season. In other words, a basketball season. And if, if it is, if it is an ugly issue, we can, we can get it fixed.
Okay.
But if it's not an issue, we've gained $12,000.
Okay, anyone?
Michelle, I'm sorry, I'm getting texts that some people can't hear. I got a text that they can't hear. I guess they're Zoom on, but they can't hear us.
Who's there?
I'm not really sure. I'm not, I'm not really familiar with this number, so I'm not sure. Somebody's calling and they said they can't hear us.
Make sure, ask them to make sure they have their volume up.
Okay.
That could be an issue. So if there's no other questions about that, we can move on. The second is the second lien bond financial report that's attached.
Yes, ma'am. It is attached, and of course, we have $156,000 left in that. And again, you know, we're, we're using that money in some different areas of trying to get some things fixed or repaired. And of course, you know, we've purchased weights for the weight rooms out of that. I'm trying to remember exactly what it is. Brandon, you can tell. Brandon, what is that we've just approved to get done? I can't remember what it was.
Yes, sir. We're looking at a couple of different projects. Some of the fencing around the HVAC unit around the exterior. And then maybe some of the projects inside of the gym. We're looking at retrofitting some of the existing gym, or excuse me, locker room doors with some of our BestLock core lock system. And then also, we're, we're also evaluating the parking lot project over at elementary out of some of that funding.
Yeah, the elementary one is, is gonna be done, but our hangup, and Mr. Harper can speak to that here a little bit later, but it's the, not the architect, but the...
It's a civil engineering firm. To, you know, trying to reach out to local vendors. And my understanding, the gentleman has been ill. Actually been in the hospital recently and trying to recuperate. And it's, it's, it's slowed that process down.
But we do have that money to just try to make our gymnasium full and complete. Trying to make our grounds look better, trying to make our buildings look better, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Or concerns? Moving on to the COVID update?
Yes, ma'am. Well, I just kinda wanted to give you an update. Of course, as, as I know all of you follow, you know, our, our area is still in the, in the red. And I wanted to show you something if I can. Chris, are you, are you the host?
I am. Let me, let me get the screen sharing before you.
Okay.
There you go. You should be able, you should be able to share now.
Okay. Let me see. Okay, let me... Okay. Can y'all see this picture?
Not yet.
I lost it. Can, can y'all see that picture?
No. No.
Oh, you can't. Okay. Okay, good deal. Just a second. I think I can get up there to it now. Okay, can you see that picture now?
Yep.
Okay. If you'll notice right here, this thing, it follows every week. And what it represents is, it's over a, the color scales on the trend table refers the rate of new known infections for a 14-day period per 10,000. If you'll notice, BIBL's here, we were 29 per 10,000, which put us in the yellow. And then we were 46, which put us in the orange, which is one from red. And then if you'll notice here, on the 26, we were 61 per 10,000. 52, anything 50 and above will put you in the red. And then this last one, which was just this past week, is 67. Obviously, what you want that number to do is to go down and, and not up. But that's where we are as far as our, our geo net, our geo fence, as far as, as our district. And that, and that's very concerning. And it's no, no surprise that our numbers have, have gone larger. Trying to get this screen back. Everybody back. Okay, that thing I was sharing, you can't still see it, can you?
Yes.
Yes.
You can still see it?
Yes. No, we can't.
Okay, now you can't. Sorry about that. But I want, I just wanted to share with you our numbers for, for our district and what, where we are and what's kinda going on. You know, at BIBL Primary, you know, they just came off of a, of a, really a three-week virtual. And that was because of the number of staff being a couple positive, but several teachers out. So we, we decided to go virtual. Well, right now, at BIBL Primary, you have one close contact, no positive for teachers. And as students, you have three close contacts and three positive. So total out there, you just have seven, seven students. At BES, which they're the one that's kind of gotten hit the hardest. Week before last, they had 10 positive cases, 23 close contact, and that was staff. And then three out because of no childcare. So we, we elected to go virtual there because of our positivity rate. And that was, that was a lot of people positive. Student-wise, we had 44 close contact. But altogether, it was a total positive cases, 17 just from that building, and then 68, which was close contact. So what we decided to do there was to go virtual. And because COVID was such a high, we didn't have any of our staff to go back into the building. And here's why. Is because that, that number of staff that were gonna be out, were gonna be out last week and this week. And it was just gonna leave about 10 people altogether in that building. So we just decided to go virtual and everyone stay home. At BMS, which is, you know, they have, if it, if it can be done right, and it's supposed to be done right, then I think you could look at BMS, because their numbers have consistently stayed low. No positive cases, two close contacts, four positive cases with student, and 39 close contact. For students, that's low, very low. So we had 45 people out. But keep in mind, about 43 of them were all students being out. On the high school level, as you know, I sent you an email today that we've, we've decided to go virtual for the remainder of the week. And here's why. You had two positive cases, but you had nine teachers out, or you had 11 teachers out, nine of them were close contact. It became an issue because you had those nine teachers out, but you also had three administrators out. Or where you had two administrators, then you had to dean a student out. Subs was gonna be a problem. Subs was a problem today. Yeah, I think you had five subs, and you couldn't find subs for six of them. And they couldn't promise that they could deliver five subs even the remainder of the week. I went over there this morning, and they were doing everything they possibly could to try to make that happen. But we just couldn't make it happen, so we decided to go virtual for the remainder of the week. Hopefully, hopefully. But you know what the fear is for Thanksgiving coming up with everybody getting together? Is that they're thinking that cases may rise, and they very well might. But the decision to go virtual at the high school today, I think, was a, a, a good decision because of the difficulties of trying to find subs. You got two things with subs. One, there's not that many. Number two, there's not a lot of them that want to sub and be around kids a whole lot because of, of the possible spread. sub and be around kids a whole lot because of of the possible spread. But that is, that was an issue over at the high school. So that is my update and projection. But I mean, without boring you with a whole lot of statistics from what's going on across the state, it's pretty obvious that Arkansas is red. And the only way that we can stop that or help that is wear a mask, wash our hands and and practice social distancing. Practicing social distance is difficult, it's very difficult. So knowing that, that is our COVID report. It's changed, it changes every day. I mean, you know, we were in school today at the high school talking about what can we do to help ourselves? And after visiting with everybody, the best way to help ourselves was to go virtual. So any questions, any questions to that?
No, but I got a question about, do we have a policy set in place if our teachers or they do not want to Zoom? Do they have to Zoom? I mean, do they have to meet face to face? If some of the teachers are not comfortable with meeting Zoom, I mean, meeting face to face, can they Zoom? Or is that they got to meet face to face?
Okay, well, are you talking about when they teach?
No, not when they teach, say if they're going to do a teacher's meeting or they're going to gather together and discuss whatever they got going on. So do they, and some of the teachers do not feel comfortable with meeting, would it, are they punished for not meeting? I just need to know what the policy is, because I didn't know if there was a policy in place. So do our teachers have to meet face to face when they're in the building?
Well, that that is definitely an administrator's call, but but I will say this here and I I I think all of our administrators are practicing this.
No.
My comment has been, you know, if you can Zoom, Zoom before you just meet.
Well, all of us not practicing that, so that's why I I know, so, but I feel like this, it shouldn't be if a teacher doesn't show up. And then you get a look or you get a a remark because you didn't show up. They don't feel comfortable with being around everybody. Because my thing is if there one person in this, say out of the eight people that's there, you might have eight tables sit up and one person sit test positive in that group. It is, is it not not right that they all got to go on quarantine, correct? If that one person tests positive?
Not if they're six foot apart.
Oh, wow, okay. Wow, okay, I I don't see that, okay. So you're saying six foot apart and you in a room because you're sitting six foot apart and one person don't test positive and you're not sure, even if you have a mask or where this stuff is coming from, that they don't have to get quarantined if that one person got it? And that would be fine with them and that's fine with you? Is that what you're saying?
If I'm if I'm following you right, Ms. Lewis, I mean, that's 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 Department of Health guidelines that says if you can social distance six foot and that person is is and you got your mask on. And if that person is six foot from you and they test positive, no, you do not have to quarantine.
Okay, so what if everybody don't have their masks on?
They shouldn't.
Well, they should.
They should, they should, but what if some don't? Because they feel like, because they don't be in this mask all day long and we six foot apart and we're not going to put our mask on and we may drop it.
Okay, but 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 you still don't have to quarantine.
Okay. Okay, so my, the next one is then do a teacher have to be there if she do not want to meet?
Well, I I'm sure you're talking about a particular situation that I don't know about.
It's two, it's, yeah, two particular schools I'm talking about, but I'm just saying, do the, so if this teachers do not feel comfortable with doing it, do they have to participate?
Well, they can, I know what you're saying by Zoom, I mean.
Yeah, can Zoom in the meeting?
We're encouraging Zooming.
Please encourage it, please encourage it.
Yeah, we're encouraging Zooming, I mean, but I mean, there may be a different situation I I that I don't know what that that I'm not understanding. But we we definitely are encouraging Zooming. And the reason we're encouraging Zooming is so, so our numbers won't go up.
Mr. Ashley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your COVID update, I have a few questions here. Last Thursday at the Blavell Middle School, did we send any kids home?
I'm not sure, Ms. Townsend, did we, or Mr. Wallace?
Okay, quick question, I didn't hear the numbers for Blavell Elementary. The students, I'm just kind of writing down from your report, your update. Can you please share with that and who is who is Ms. Townsend?
She's a P O C.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Those numbers, I can share those with you after the board meeting, Mr. Hammitt.
Okay, my concern is this, Mr. Ashley. I I think I think we need to look at this very closely. I've had a lot of teacher staff, community members reach out to me and I understand both sides of this. It's difficult for parents that don't have childcare to miss work to take care of students that may be home virtually. I also understand some people are afraid of their job security if we were to go virtual. Others are concerned about their health and being exposed and the exposure factor and not truly trusting the policies and guidelines we have in place as a district. So what I'm saying is I have teachers calling me that don't feel safe in the classroom. I have support staff, I have administrators that do not feel safe. With the numbers as they are and some of the numbers that that I am questioning or the information that's been given by you, I'm having a a few doubts that we can talk about offline. However, I think it is the board's decision that we need to take a closer look at this. With the numbers as they are and they are rising, I feel that we may need to look at going virtual for the remaining of the semester, possibly starting this week. Given the community, the parents, teachers and staff the rest of the week to, you know, attend or get childcare lined up. But I think we need to look at this as a as a community, from a community perspective. And we don't know who we may be putting in jeopardy by the decisions that we're making a as a school district to operate. These cases are alarming, the numbers are alarming, and I think it's time for the board to step in. I I appreciate the updates that you have provided and given us, but I think we need to make a hard decision and that's a decision to help keep our community safe and limit the exposure factor that we have when people are in person in our district, in our buildings and facilities. Those employees that are worried about job security, if they can socially distance, remain six feet apart and not be around someone fifteen minutes, you know, feel free to keep them working or doing something. But I think the board needs to make a decision and let the community know where each board member stands on this. So I would like to make a motion, the Blavell Public School District remain in virtual learning until January of twenty twenty-one. Mrs. Madam Secretary, Ms. Sims.
Like the second.
Okay, we have a motion. And we just had a second. So we'll need to vote and we hear that again, your motion.
We need to have had discussion before we vote.
Okay, that was it, I just was saying that, can we have, I asked him, will he go over and and have that? Exactly what he said and then we can have discussion, I wanted him to repeat it first.
Right, just Blavell to remain in virtual education for the remaining of the first semester of the school year and resume, look at resuming education, in-person education in January of twenty twenty-one after the the Christmas holidays and New Year's break.
Okay.
For for discussion piece on that, of course, I I think the only one that's here is Tiffany, that Aaron was involved on it. About a week, I guess, week and a half ago, we met with Dr. Tomlinson, who's in the not epiduralist, but it's epidemiologist, I'm sure I still messed that up, but it's epidemiologist for for the Department of Health. And a discussion was had about our our numbers. And it was mentioned by somebody in our group that says, you know, something similar to what you said, Mr. Hammitt, about, you know, closing the school down. And they very quickly said, but your numbers don't support that. And and what what they were referring to was just like the numbers at the primary don't support a a shutdown or a vert or pivoting to virtual. The same way at the Blavell Middle School doesn't support it. If if it weren't for the lack of subs, the high school wouldn't fall in that category. So the board's ability to, even though I I understand, I I really do understand it, I don't and I wish I could sit here and tell you that you can or you can't, the board can or can't do that. Because I honestly believe that the board's going to do that here in just a little bit. And and then we're going to have to find out if you have the ability to truly do that. And that is to declare that this school district is going to be virtual until, you know, when we come back from the Christmas holiday. Because the first thing they're going to do, they're going to want either all of our board or board president, Aaron did meet, Aaron was one of them that met with us the other day. And she heard what they said about each school determining whether they go virtual or not is going to, we're going to look at our numbers.
Okay, Ms. Ashley, I I totally, I totally get it. And I'm not comfortable as a board member waiting for our numbers to hit that threshold. When I have teachers calling me, parents calling me, community members calling me, when I have people saying, Mr. Hammitt, I don't believe you're getting the right information. And here's why. That puts us in a position where some of our school administrators, our teachers, staff, don't trust us making sound decisions for them and their their health. And that's my position that I stand on, I don't want to wait until a certain number is met when I have the ability to prevent and help stop that number being met by taking action now. And yes, I've researched what the board's possibilities are regarding this matter. And if a board can't make a decision, what good is it for us to be a board in this district? And I I'm sure you would like for all the rest of the board members to be here for a more favorable outcome. But truly, we don't know the outcome at this time, as you just referred to, what the board was going to do. We don't know that because we haven't voted yet, Mr. Ashley. So we're going to let a fair vote take place. And then we can, you know, discuss the different parameters around the board's ability to make a decision for not only our school, but our community as well. I'm concerned about the health of our administrators, our teachers, staff and students at this time. This has nothing to do with a metric or a number that someone wants us to reach. We have to be proactive in our leadership and we have to be trusting of ourselves to make sound judgment concerning this matter. Seeing that we'll be out two weeks for Christmas, a week for Thanksgiving, we're only looking at maybe three and a half weeks of school. And I think that's the best possible opportunity for us to kind of mitigate some of the the factors of our numbers as a maybe increasing here soon. Thank you.
Ms. Ash.
Go ahead, talk.
Okay, you know, this is, this is a situation that we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. I think I agree with what Desmond is saying, but I also know that it isn't a decision according to the governor that's ours to make. If it should occur, I'm concerned about our kids, I know for a fact that our kids are struggling so bad with the virtual. You know, if if we said we were going to go Zoom the whole time, I would feel much more comfortable with it. Our kids are not learning virtual, you know. If there was somebody there to, when they raised their hand at that moment that could answer a question, it would be much better for our kids. I'm I'm with Desmond, I want what's best for the kids, but I also want to look at it academically.
Ms. Johnson, some of them are Zooming, the majority of them I know are Zooming and they have time for the kids to log on and Zoom and ask questions. So I do know some of them, I don't know about all of them, but I know the majority of them are doing that to, or the virtue.
Yeah, I mean, there's no question about the virtual part and and some of them are doing it and a lot of them are not doing it. So and that's that's another problem in itself that we're trying to address and deal with. But of course, some might disagree with me, but there's no better instruction than face to face. Best instruction, Lord knows, I know, we, you know, I mean, I care about the kids, I want what's best for the kids. But at the same time, the those that govern us are are saying, you know, okay, we want you to stay open if you can. And if your numbers don't support you closing, then they don't want you to close. In other words, we don't want you to close when the numbers are manageable, people quarantined, things like that. And then sit around and wait for it to get bad when in the meantime, you could be having face to face instruction.
Mr. Ashley, Mr. Ashley, I I I'm not going to tell you who you just reminded me of. But I think sometimes we just got to step out of out of certain roles and understand that we're human. Our community is hurting, our numbers are up. The forecast is not favorable concerning the pandemic and the rates of people catching this virus in Mississippi County. I'm pretty sure the governor would love to, love for every school to support his president's position on in-person school. I understand what state we're in, but Mr. Ashley, this is not politics anymore. When we have people here that have are dying, we have family members of employees. One employee comes to mind, had multiple family members pass out of her immediate family. This is not a political position or move that I'm considering my motion on. Is that I don't like a teacher calling me at eleven o'clock at night crying, saying she doesn't feel safe teaching because two of her students were whatever. So so understand that, I understand that we're going to, if the vote is whichever So, so understand that, I understand that we're gonna, if the vote is whichever way it goes, we're gonna look into what powers the board has. And if we don't have the power to protect our students, um, staff and teachers in our community. I think we may need to reevaluate having boards in Arkansas, period. And I will call the governor and tell them that myself.
I'm just wondering if we need to just research that before we make a mo- you know, before we, we vote on it, um.
Toby, trust me, I have. And I can give you the information that was given to me.
Mr. Ashley, so why does they say as long as it's virtue that it was a, it's a local decision to make? It is up to the district to make this decision. The Board of Education. Where are they, where, where would that be in place? If the Board of Education says it's a local decision, it's not a state decision. Why would they say that?
Well, when it, when it comes to schools, what they do is they do, they tell you, it's just like, they told us when we were gonna start. You know, they told us when we were gonna start. They tell us every year when we're gonna start, and you can't start before then. So, so my guess is on this here is that if they're gonna, they can tell you that they want you to be open and they want you to be face-to-face if you can. Now, there is some leeway in there when I call and I talk to my P, the, 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 uh, the Department of Ed POC is who we go through, are the ones been assigned to us. Um, but when they're telling you, yes, you're going to be open if you can be. That's what I'm, I'm telling you, that's what we're gonna have to be, if you can be. Um.
Mr. Ashley, I have researched this and I'm pretty sure you've talked to the right people. But as an elected member of the Blavell Board of Directors, we have a say in what is the best interest of our students, number one. Staff, teachers, and administrators, number two. If we have a right as a duly appointed or elected member of the Blavell Board of Directors to make this decision to keep our students and communities sa- as safe as possible. We're not gonna prevent all, but if we prevent one case, um, of COVID increasing in our district, I think it's well worth it. I don't like hearing what I'm hearing. And if we have
What is it you think you're hearing? I mean,
Uh, Mr. Ashley, we have a motion. We, me and you can talk later.
Well, I'm not through talking.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. We just have a motion and let's discuss, you know, the motion as it stands.
Okay, Toby, would you like to speak?
Well, I, I thought that's what we were doing. I thought we were, you know, I can't make a decision based on, and, and I do trust you, but based on you just saying, trust me. I wanna know in black and white. I mean, can Tiffany Townsend tell us exactly what legalities are involved? Um, you know, I want what's best for our kids too, and if it's, it's to stay home, so be it, but I wanna know legalities on this.
Right, so, so Toby, when I say trust me is this, is that I've researched this and, um,
Well, I wanna know what you found.
So the decision, a- a- as it was communicated to me, that the Blavell Board of Directors has the ability and authority to do what's best to keep those kids safe during this pandemic. We are the governing body of the Blavell School District, we as a board. We're not, the kids are still attending school, so we're not taking them away from education, um, altogether. That would be a statewide, um, um, factor that, that could be considered. As it was told to me, you are still providing an opportunity for education virtually. And that, that decision can be made by the Blavell Board of Directors. And that's when I talk to the Department of Ed.
Okay, so it was the Department of Education that told you, if I'm understanding you, that the decision of our district is ours to make?
Correct.
Yes.
I, and I am not taking them away from education. I'm providing an alternate means to education for, for school safety, was, was how it was worded.
Mr. Ashley?
Well, I, I've, I mean, uh, uh, I don't like where Mr. Hammond's, uh, insinuating that, I guess, that what me and, and everybody else is trying to do is set up our, our students or teachers for danger.
I'll, I'll, I'll interject there, because I, Mr. Hammett did not say you were setting up. I said, I am, I would like to be proactive to prevent, Mr. Ashley, let's not word that.
Okay, this is Michelle, and I just want us to make sure we stay on, um, on topic. I don't think anybody is accusing each other of doing any harm to anyone. The thing, our concern as a board, are, are these two things? Are the face-to-face contact and our students being able to, or virtual? And if our students are actually getting the work done while they're doing virtual or if they are doing, uh, face-to-face? I think the administration feel like face-to-face is, uh, more important. Uh, well, the teach, the students are getting, um, learning better from face-to-face. And the other, other side is that the people are getting sick and there's a concern. So we just wanna make sure that we just stay on focus on those two things. Now, um, I'm gonna have, what, I want to say that I am concerned, I'm concerned already before this that the kids are maybe not learning, some of them are not taking it serious, are not logging on, and not getting the proper education. What is that going to do to them once they start going to testing? But I'm also concerned more so with their health. And if the, the concern right now is when they go home, we know nationwide and going by the scientists, most, they are telling people, you know, not to even gather. We've had to make that decision. I think Mr. Ashley asked, you know, had asked the question with everyone. You have to, we have to make that decision of whether you're gonna get together for family. And unfortunately, guess what? There're gonna be hundreds of families, we just talking about in our community, that are still going to get together. And some of them have COVID, some of them don't know they have it. And the concern for me is that once we get back, if we, if we come back and there's been a ga- a large gathering with the family members and friends, that it's going to create a larger, I don't know, I think it got purple zone, is it another zone? I think I saw on your, on your chart, where it's one hundred or more. I think it's gonna become, you know, it's already a pandemic, but really a pandemic in Mississippi County for us with that. So it will make it worse, which might shut us down anyway and then make us go a little further past January. So let's think about the option of these three weeks, working really hard to do virtual. Uh, and get to keep the kids engaged as much as possible, this is just my take. And so that they won't, people won't bring it back from Thanksgiving and then immediately after Christmas. That's my concern. But I am concerned about our kids learning, they have to, we got to get them engaged. And I think the parents who are calling, I think the teachers who are calling, the community who are, who are calling in and calling the different board members or talking on the community, they have a responsibility to also make sure or help one another out, so that when the kids are on virtual, be, you know, be, um, vigilant in making sure that those kids are logging in and that they're doing their work. This is on everybody.
I'm just so mad about face-to-face. We got some of the teachers even doing face-to-face where they instructional time, just like it is, will you sit down, will you be quiet, can you put the mask back on, will you put the mask back on? I mean, they're doing it. I've heard it several times. I could walk in there, I even have, can you put your mask back on, please? You need your mask on. Can you imagine a teacher too standing up in class trying to teach and you got three or four times she's saying that too? So what they learning there? So it's, it's hard all the way around. Like Ms. Johnson said, we damn if we do, we damn if we don't. Let's just make it, we gotta make it, make it happen.
Well, just for future reference, let me ask Mr. Hammett. Mr. Hammett, who, who did you speak to with the Department of Ed that gave you that, gave you that information? Because, see, that's not what I'm getting.
Let me ask y'all this, before he answered that, can we, can we, I know Erin, she's out now, but I think you said that, um, that President Erin had spoke, I don't know if y'all three were, you, Mr. Ashley and Ms. Carrington and someone from the Department of Ed had spoken and had came up with, and they told them what, what they could and could not do, is that?
Well, I know, I know that, what, what has been told to me and guided to me, a decision like this, you better inv- involve the Department of Health and the Department of Ed. Um, because my guess is you'll be getting called from the governor about wanting to know why your school shut down.
Okay, is there any way that the board, uh, or as many board members they can and, uh, with you, meet with you and at the same time, be on speakerphone with someone from the Department of Education so that we can have a clear understanding, it won't be hearsay or any other thing, anything like that from your part or any, uh, board member, that we can agree to do that? And from there, we can schedule another school board meeting and make a decision, is that, um, are you all okay with that for the board?
And
Tomorrow.
Me getting that meeting together would be easy.
Tomorrow, board meeting six foot apart, everybody wear your mask.
Well, no, we need to meet with, we need to be, um, they want to talk on the phone first with the
We could do it in the board meeting, it's big enough for us.
We could do it Zoom.
That's right, we can do it, do it.
We could do it Zoom, that's, that's how I met with them last week.
Okay. Can we agree on that before we make a, um, before we, uh, make a vote? Because it will be redundant if we made a vote, made a vote, and then was told later that we could not do it. Let's do it on the front end in the right way.
I think there was, because there's a motion and a second, I think you still have to vote, even if nobody votes.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I think you've lost one of your members, I'm not sure.
Tracy.
Can you vote if you don't have a quorum?
I didn't even know she left.
No. Okay.
Well, the meeting, well, well, the meeting is over now, right?
Yep, the meeting, no.
Hey, hold on, Ms. Richie, is it possible that she just got, um, disconnected or, um, can you?
Let me text her.
Yeah, she may not have left.
I'll text her.
But, but I do know this here, if, you know, you know, if we shut the school down, which is what you're calling yourself in critical. Uh, I guess that you'd be calling yourself critical area, then you'd have to shut down your sports and things like that, 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 that's my guess.
That's fine, I mean, it's, that's what I love it, if we have to. I mean, if that's what we worried about is these sports and keeping this stuff going, I think that's something wrong too, something wrong with that. If that's one of our main things, that we wanna keep this sport going, and these folks are getting sick, so we gotta be real about this. Is that one of our main problems? Shut it all down. If we don't have school, we shut it down. Some things has got, that just makes sense now. You, oh, I hate to even say something about sports.
Well, what we're trying to do, and I think the governor has been very clear in this, is that he wants us to try, in a very difficult situation, is to move forward and try to have school as the best way we possibly can. And, and, um, you know, it's just, I'll even say this here. Uh, it's just like with our numbers. And we've had, in one school or couple of school, we've had one positive teacher and there'd be thirteen teachers that would be quarantined because they were close contact. See, we gotta get better at that. We don't, there shouldn't be thirteen people quarantined from one person. But we do have the ability to meet Zoom. We do have the ability to, to meet Zoom. I mean, you know, you don't have to, you can have everybody in their classroom and meet Zoom, so.
Can I ask something? What, what, what do we have in school now? We really, so what about the concerns of the elementary not having? You Zoom it, y'all are doing it when you call, when you think it's better. So it's still the same thing, we're not having school. I mean, your, your high school is out, I mean, for another two weeks, and what, till we come back. And then middle school been, uh, not middle school, what you call it been out, we had kids that they sent home from middle school. So I'm just saying, where are they learning then? We still are not meeting. Even just because with one or two schools shut down, uh, we still got a problem. You worried about the babysitters, you worried about this, but you still shut down, uh, elementary. And that'll be, they're the younger ones. So I'm just trying to see a clear picture. We still are not having full school with every last one of our schools.
We're having it the best way we can.
Yeah, I'm look, I'm looking at, um, the board, I don't see if, uh, I don't see Mr. Hammett. If Mr. Hammett, are you still there?
He and Tracy are both off.
Yeah.
Then, um, the meeting will have to be adjourned, because we do not have a quorum.
Hey, Mr. Bobby Jeff, thinking, I just wanna remind you guys that I'm online still. I guess we can resume this another time if needed.
Yeah, who is it?
Who is it?
This is Jeff Pruitt from Adco.
Yeah, yeah, Jeff, we're gonna, we're gonna have to, uh, maybe we can do this tomorrow night or the next night or Thursday night.
Yes, sir.
But, but hopefully your schedule will allow.
It will allow it. And, uh, I just, Mr. Ashley, that there's a lot of COVID plans that I have and what we do initially with our company, uh, as part of the whole training process. And it will definitely help the school out tremendously with, uh, electrostatic spraying and other disinfecting tools that we offer. And, uh, that's what I wanted to do with the school district, so I'm available, you just let me know when.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Um.
Tracy didn't answer me when I texted her.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I do know this here, um, and, and of course, the ones that needed really hear it got off, but, you know, I can only have conversations about things that I know that they're, they're wanting to talk about. Uh, I had no earthly idea that Mr. Hammett felt that way. It'd be good if the superintendent did know that we could have conversations, but I, you know, I, I had no earthly idea.
Um, I think we should go ahead and close out the, to Blavell School Board meeting. And then, um, Mr. Ashley, if you can make arrangements for us to meet with the Department, do a Zoom. And, and please email us and let us know.
In fact, I, or the, the, she represents the Department of Ed. I said, can a school board vote to go virtual till January? She said, that is not an option that I know, no, uh.
I didn't think so either.
No, I didn't either, but.
Or to, for the sake of making everybody feel better, that everybody can hear it, okay?
Hey, Ms. Sims, thank, thank you, you did a very good job.
Sure did.
Thank y'all.
No, you did.
I hope I have to do it again.